Let's call a meeting, no order. It is Tuesday, November 27th, 2018.
Please stand.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You're okay with this? No, I do. I'm like your red head stepping out over here. It's okay, Chris. Hurt my feelings, Sam.
Okay, Minister reports received and filed. We've got to keep moving here. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Kind of slow week, really, but we've got a Cup Scout presentation doing Thursday night for some out there at Warburgville, and then Leadership Friday morning, and I imagine we've got an MSPCP meeting as well Friday morning. And then Friday afternoon is a holiday for Blair Oaks playing in the championship game up at Faroe Field. Monday, it's Hanukkah. I don't know what that is for sure, but it's on my calendar. Are you going to the Capitol Board, Capitol Region Board of Governors?
Gala, yes. Yes, I am one of the hosts.
So you can represent? I've got too many other things going, I won't be able to make it. That's about it.
Okay, there's a Hartman Port Authority meeting tomorrow at 7:30 in the chamber.
So is that just for the Port Board that has been established, or what are they, will they let us know about them, too?
I'm not really posted, but anyway, it's for anybody, really. Obviously, it's a board meeting, but...
Because I'd like to know about them and be able to attend as well, even though I'm not on the board, but right now it's going to be the most important time to be.
Right. I'll try to let you guys know when those are in advance. I have an MMRPC executive meeting at 11:30 tomorrow, Road Bridge Advisory Meeting at 8:00 AM Thursday, Public Works, I think it's a Safety Committee meeting. I have it on my calendar for Thursday, 10. You said something about MSPCP. I didn't see that.
I think we had on, it was like 9:30 Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah. I don't think I'm going to be able to make it, but...
It's on my calendar, it's 1:00, too.
I haven't received any other emails, or agenda, or anything on us. I don't know, we'll make email and see what we've got going on.
I'd say not at some point, too, but anyway. There it is. Leadership Forum and MSPCP on the 30th. It's about to be meeting next week.
I have an interview with Business View Magazine tomorrow, seeing if they might want to do a story on Cole County. Their offices are down in Fort Meyer, Florida, so if I have to go down there to do an interview, I'll do that. But that's at 7:30, so I won't make the Port Authority meeting. Thursday is the Mayor's Tree Lighting, too, at 6:30 in the evening. And then Friday's the Living Windows, 6 to 9 P.M.
Windsor Presiding Commissioner's Tree Lighting.
You know, the first community Christmas trees were actually lit on the courthouse lawns, so I'm working on my article for December's News Tribune. But the first community tree was out here. Saturday's the 79th, the annual JC's Christmas parade, and Monday's the Board of Governors' Gala Dinner, so that's all I've got. Okay, Commission Comments. Bids and Contracts, Bid Award 2018-41, Safety and Security Film for Windows and Doors.
Did you put her up coming in today?
I don't know. She's probably here. Debbie didn't give me anything on her.
She's still hacking, we don't want her.
I can show you that. The spreadsheet that she gave me, that there's, we had $15,000 allotted in our capital improvements, and I was just asking for a non-anchored system, but the three companies that came and looked at it said it's really not doing much good to put this on there unless you put some kind of blast mitigation on it.
She said it's supposed to be next.
It's today. So the blast mitigation is the alternate number two, is what they're saying. It's $14,000 to $45,000. My recommendation would be to go ahead and make that a particular one, because it does give us more than just the film on the glass. And the blast mitigation, what makes me feel better about it is the tornadoes. So it gives us a little more, especially for the people working in the front office, the people working in Patrol Division, but it secures our facility, shutting them down when we first built it.
Sure, you picked the most expensive one.
It's under budget. Yeah, I didn't work on it here, I just got over it.
Yeah. She was coughing yesterday, I thought.
People cough like that, lose their voice, they shouldn't be around here.
So what all are we doing here, John?
So on the windows that people can get to, we'll be able to secure the windows, so you won't be able to make forced entry into our facility without making a whole lot of noise in a long time.
So just before the administrative offices?
No. No, actually, it goes around the exterior of the jail, the windows and the plumbing chaise. It also goes, it takes care of all the windows facing the parking area in the front, the windows along High Street, and then the windows that curve around on Adams Street, my office, that people can stand on and force entry into our facility.
So which one are you looking at, the base, or the alternate two?
Yes, this one over here. Because like I said, the bid, we had allotted $15,000, and this gives us twice as much protection and still is under budget.
So do we know what products they're putting on there, or is there any data on any of that?
Yeah. Yeah, we requested, I don't have the ledger with me, but I think it's...
Is there any kind of warranty on it, or?
I don't know the answer to that. Is there a warranty on this?
Yeah.
10 years?
I really looked yesterday, I thought this was next week, so I'm sorry, I'm so unprepared Two years, I think? It was in the specs. If you give me a minute, I can go check for sure.
Do you want to push us back to the end of the agenda, or we can?
Yeah, let me do that, so I can go at least do it on...
We can look it up.
Just while you're looking at stuff. I mean, so there's a two-year warranty, how long is it going to last?
I...
So I mean, obviously, it's going on a window, UV, all this other stuff, what's, it's got to have some type of lifespan before it's no longer good.
I don't know the answer to that.
I can call at that time.
It's the same stuff that we put on the windows of the courthouse.
Questions that I had, I mean, obviously, sun's going to beat on it for a while, it's going to break it down, and at some point, it's not going to be any good anymore, I would think.
Okay.
I don't know.
Where would that be, at Jan under bid docs, or addendum, or prevent a ten to...
Yeah, under the bid documents.
That would be their replies?
No, the replies aren't out there, but it says, if you go to section 30, da-da-da-da-da. Yeah, we had put in there, Chris, county requires warranty from installer and film manufacturer against crazy peeling, cracking for a minimum period of 10 years.
Okay.
I would like to know when we have to redo it, at some point.
10 years.
10 years.
Well, if that was in our bid, then...
That's how long the warranty's...
If that was in our bid, then it, I mean, and they sign it, it's...
Is it good, or?
I'm good, I mean, you can check again, but that's, that was in our requirements, so I would...
That's part of the requirements.
Yeah, I would assume that they have to abide by that.
I don't remember the exact conversation we had, but we had $15,000 in there for the budget, so it's within it. I'm comfortable with 10 years, I was surprised it was that long. So as long as you're comfortable with the warranty and that they'll take care of it if it does peel or crack, I'm fine with it. I'm not going to rehash if we, did we beat you up over it the first time?
Always.
No. No, we didn't give a minute for it.
So we probably need to...
Come here, stick your hand here. Stick your hand here.
I'm fine with it. I said, I don't remember the exact conversation we had when we agreed to go ahead and bid it, so that's when we should have decided if we want to even mess with it, because, you know, why bid it if we're not going to do it? So, now, if you want to look at some of it, some more, I'm fine, but otherwise, I'm okay with it. The 10 years seems reasonable. Probably more than I thought.
I'm okay with it, too. You know, you made a comment, why bid it if we're not going to do it? Well, we don't always approve every bid that goes out, so...
True.
So I'm going to disagree with you on that comment, so nobody gets approval to run a bid.
So, John, did you get approval before you did this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well...
Anyway, so I'm good, we have a contract or anything with this?
No, we'll just do a PO for that.
Okay. So we'll need to sign a contract, or execute a contract for the tenure warranty or something, won't we? So we can do it next week?
I went through and read.
I'm assuming that they would just issue the warranty after completion, but I can double-check on what we need to do.
I would think this would be another contract that we'd be in bid for, just to make sure that they comply with all our specifications.
Okay.
So they have work comp and insurance and all that other stuff. We'll need the W-2, right? We'll need all that stuff, Chris.
Be good, yeah.
So I expect we've got a warrant back. We have that we award the security found for windows and doors to sound performance, the tank eyes, alternate number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. Okay, new business, counts payable review.
There's none for today.
Okay. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 10.
This is a court order for $3,000. It's additional money brought in by the inmate commissary that needs to go into inmate security bioventure.
Is that approved and signed, Court Order Number 10?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Discussion of Information Systems Move. Have I got a, I'm working on one of those school trailers from over at JC.
I don't know what that could help for.
Pretty secure, too, huh?
There you are, sir.
Just saying one email? Okay. Oh, I might as well save me from having to find it. Oh, I'm done with that.
I hear you, sir. Annual report for the RPC, I'll get you guys a copy of it.
Thanks.
You don't need one anymore, I don't know.
Thank you, sir.
Why does Brian need such a big office?
I actually have two. The sheriff's offered me two offices.
This area is actually smaller than what we have currently have.
No, actually, Melissa's is bigger.
So is this all in that empty space there, or is there...
Yeah, that drawing is all within that shell.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, so I'm fine with this plan, if this works and allows for future expansion. So, but I mean, what are we going to, are we going to need somebody else to come in and draw some of this stuff, or what are we going to need to do?
Well, some of the things that, one of the things is that I don't have any experience designing a data center, which is what this is, right?
Right.
So I don't know the different things to consider overall, so I wouldn't know the power requirements, for example. I know that there's, you know, a lot of places, they'll have raised floors for the cabling and things like that. You know, you're talking about, do we do a solid wall versus a more modular approach? You know, where we better utilize the space, and just all those different things like that, and those are just some of the quick-moving thoughts that I had. So I really think that, my opinion is, is we need somebody who's kind of been there and done that, had some experience in it, and, but I wouldn't know who that is. Now, I did talk to, I think it's Larry Brandhorse over at Architects Alliance, just kind of told him that, you know, we were thinking about doing this, and, of course, they'd had some experience with Central Bank and things like that, and he said they actually get an engineer out of St. Louis who has experience putting together these types of environments.
Okay.
And honestly, I wouldn't have time to oversee, you know, or supervise the construction of that, so...
The other thing, next year, Brian will be getting another person, so that's something else that we didn't really consider on this.
I was wanting to think I was going to get two offices.
Sorry.
Well, that was one of the questions. If Brian gets another person, where are we going to put that person?
Right. Right. So I would think that the, you know, that space, because right now, I don't know, the sheriff's already graciously given me a corner office with a view, so...
What's the cell number?
I won't go there. Anyway, so we could use that space that's called Brian's Office, I think could be later to be named, possibly later, office. It's, how much smaller is that space?
Oh, gosh. Why are you asking me that question? We have currently, I believe, we figured like 280 square feet, if I'm reading this right. Wait, 250, total, 600 square feet total. And I don't remember how much 30...
Yeah, but I think we're actually cut down the size of it.
Yeah, we're definitely going, cutting down, because we're not even considering, like, our area where we have our refrigerator and all that stuff, which we won't need over there, but we also have things that we store there. We have a big table there, we have a closet, but we store one of our, some of our stuff in. So it is quite a bit smaller. I don't have the exact measurement of how much smaller this is.
So what, what if any, I mean, if we move everything over there, are we going to have data cables and everything else coming back over here to service these buildings and other buildings, or, I mean, is there going to have to be anything bored over there? I mean, I'm just asking.
Sure. So right now, the connection, in my now almost two years of experience here, is accomplished through a fiber run from the county over to the sheriff's office, and that's how you get the crosstalk. Because I understand, whenever they were doing the sheriff's building, there was some type of an issue with the street, there's a reason why they couldn't bore a hole and just do it. So we actually have like an interim provider that we piggyback onto their fiber network, and it goes, then it runs back over to the jail. So, but basically, we would reverse engineer how that's happening. So like right now, all the communications come into the basement of the courthouse and go out from there.
Right.
So we would basically take that type of, all those different connections and stuff, and put them over in the sheriff's building, and then the annex would communicate through fiber.
Okay.
The big question's going to be, is, right now, since all the fiber is down into the basement, like there's a fiber run from the Carnegie Building into the basement of the courthouse as well, we're going to have to probably maintain some type of communications presence in that area, I would think. And it, you know, kind of how it was done a few years ago, when they moved it from the fifth floor, the IS room from the fifth floor down to the basement, was they dropped, the fiber went up to the fifth floor, and then they dropped it back down and ran it over to the basement. So there's still a little bit of a presence up on the fifth floor as well. So all that'll have to kind of be really carefully planned out and thought through, so...
The new space was 600 square feet. What we have now is over 900 square feet. That 900 was not even counted, our offices and closets and stuff, I think.
So obviously, we talked to Jeff Hillkey about some issues last week. I mean, are there going to be some things that aren't going to be able to be transferred over there?
You know, I don't know that, since I'm not that familiar with the systems, all the different systems that are in play there, but I can only kind of speak to what the county uses and the way a data voice, so, I mean, I would have to probably talk to the different vendors to see if that's possible.
Sure. So is that what a, some type of engineer will be able to come in and look at all our systems, and then hopefully design it as to what we need over there, or how to do all this?
Right. I think, you know, I was talking a little bit to Rich Bizar this morning, and he's, we were talking about, you're probably a phased approach, if we could do that, we'd be the best. Because frankly, you know, at some point, you know, everybody's still got to be able to function and run and things like that. So I talked to Central Link about it, and honestly, it sounds like to me that getting the communication system set up over there is going to probably be the easiest part of it, as far as getting the communications over to the building. But whenever it comes to designing the, you know, the space and different things like that, I think that's what's going to take the longest. And then, so I would work with Central Link on the communications end of it to make sure that happens. And then also, I'd probably work with Rich, too, because he's got a lot of background, you know, as far as the county and the different closets and things like that, so, but I guess it's like eating elephant, you just do it one bite at a time. Make sure you don't turn everybody's world upside down in the process.
So is the process to engage Architects Alliance, and then have them engage a subconsultant to basically do this project?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because Larry Brandhorse, he's a K-State guy, I don't think you can trust...
Yeah, he seemed very, very nice on the phone, so...
But really, if we, the more we can put over there with you, I think it's going to be better in the long run, so...
And it's more than just that space that we've given them. Like I said, we already gave them another office, and then there's another server room down, just down the hallway around that, we're also giving them also, so there's more space over there than just that one spot. Also, with the phase in, I think you can tell now, this is not going to be an easy or a short project, so we have to protect the phones that we have now. I would recommend that we, phase one would be to hire a firm to come over and figure out how, if nothing else, just power the phone systems. So that way, if we lose power, we can go get one of Bill's generators and pull it over and simply plug it up. Now, I'm not saying we run the whole building, I'm saying that we run just certain aspects of it. And the reason why that's so important, because not only does the sheriff's department lose their phones, but so does EMS, which means they can't dispatch. So they can't get phone calls, ring down phone calls from JC PD, so this is a lot more involved than what it appears on the outside.
So some temporary measures to keep us up and running.
Just in case, especially going into the winter.
So what do you guys think? I mean, you want me to get a hold of Kerry and try to see if they can get us some type of...
I don't think it's that hard to draw up something like this and...
I don't think drawing it up is the hard part, I think it's getting the engineer, I mean...
Do we have an engineer when we went from upstairs to the basement?
Yes.
We did?
Architects Alliance.
Are you talking here in the grass?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know.
There's a lot more to it, whenever you're starting to talk about moving around power and, you know, this server room is going to have, it's going to have, it has to have its own air conditioner. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of aspects involved in this, it's just not as simple as going up and designing a room.
And this drawing, actually, based upon what the engineers come up, this drawing actually may change, too, because this is just basically Melissa, Melissa Nice idea of what it should look like, yeah.
Very amateur. Yeah, that was just kind of brainstorming. I mean, if we have a server, separate server room, we may not need that much space for sort of...
Well, it's not that big of a server, but it is a space.
I haven't seen it, so, yeah.
It's a, it's very small, but...
Closet.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we may end up needing more space for one thing and not for another, or whatever, you know?
Well, I think we need some kind of an engineer, because ideally, the more we can put over there, the better, and...
Well, and that's for current purposes, and we need to look for future growth as well, because I don't think the IT area is getting any smaller.
I mean, I think we need to move forward. I mean, I would say I don't, I don't think there's a whole lot for Architects Alliance to do, but I mean, you know, the engineer's probably going to be more of a data electrical engineer type person, I would assume. Architect would be able to assist with the floor, the walls, whatever that may be. I mean, it's going to have to be a cooperative effort, because I don't think we can just go out and hire an engineer and say, because he ain't going to draw it up, he's going to tell us what we need to do, and somebody's going to have to put it on paper so we can bid it.
How much money you got for this?
None. We didn't budget, I don't think we budgeted anything for it, did we?
This would, and this would, like we talked about it before, this would come out of law enforcement, if anything.
Well, this could come out of a number of different things.
I'm thinking we had something in sales tax, we just didn't know what that number was.
I think it was listed, I'm not sure if we had a number for it, though.
Yeah.
And capital improvements.
Yes, it's on the list of capital improvements to come out of our capital improvement sales tax, but I don't know that we had a number in mind of what it was going to cost.
What do you think it's going to cost now?
Probably a lot more than what we thought.
This is totally, this is new and on me, so I don't even want to throw any numbers out. It's going to get expensive with all this stuff that we're talking about doing, if you're getting architects involved in it and moving and stuff. We need to get a number together. I don't want to spend $30,000 having something drawn up and then have a $250,000 price tag on it. We can't do it, so... Because we're going to have to design it, build it, move, you're going to have furniture, that's going to, not saying the health department move was bad, or that this is bad, but the health department...
but the health department added up and kept adding up. So, I think we need to prepare for the worst on this and get a big number that we can pick away at.
Well, you want me to get with Architects Alliance and just see what they think design costs will be and construction costs?
Yeah, I think that'd be a, be an idea. We can...
So, let me, let me get with Kerry, and he can contact the engineer and just say, this is kinda what we're looking at, and he can come over and look at it or whatnot.
Are you talking about doing this suspended floor? You don't know. You're talking about actually doing it?
No, yeah, no, we're, that's one thing that you have to really need to put in there.
Can we reuse that one that was upstairs?
I don't, I don't know that.
Wasn't that one suspended?
It is suspended, yeah.
So, I mean, if there's stuff that we can reuse to try to keep the price down, it's, I think it needs to be done, but I think the price tag on it's just gonna be a lot bigger than what we're thinking.
Well, I think, sure, it will be.
Well, I like your approach. I think get the engineer involved, start getting an idea about the cost. It's a great idea.
Oh, yeah, butter me up, right? It's a great idea. That's a great question.
Well, the study from Architects Alliance is not, I mean, they're gonna get, they'll, they'll be able to tell you how much, approximately how much it's gonna cost to do this.
Well, I have no idea. Their cost may be a per footage that, from other projects.
Right. Well, they'll use it from when they built our facility. So, that, that's what they, that's what, I'm sure they'll use some of the numbers for the kind of...
Well, I think this is a totally different animal, just my opinion. But I mean, to build out a data room, I mean, there's probably a number for that.
And you're probably right.
What did we have them do when we came from the upstairs down?
I don't reme, I don't know. I know that there was a design issue, because they had issue with the, the fiber. And then somebody brought up when they were doing it, that if they were gonna be moving the fiber and stuff, they oughta just move it over to the sheriff's department. That was me, by the way.
I'm not gonna...
I'm just saying. So, but Dale was against that idea.
So, can we move forward? We're getting a estimate from Architects Alliance on design and construction costs?
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that before we spend anything.
Okay.
I just think that's gonna keep adding up. It wasn't just put some walls up, move them over there, run another wire, and have them talk to each other and we're going. Actually, the move from the upstairs to the basement wasn't near as bad as I thought it was gonna be. I thought it was gonna be a major headache, 'cause IT stuff is just a major headache. So...
You're right. Again.
Well, hopefully, we can get it done in a way that we won't have to worry about making changes and stuff later. I mean, too many changes later. I think we do it right the first time.
Well, and two, and like I said, I wasn't here back when it happened, but you didn't change physical locations. You just basically, you know, everything comes in down in the basement.
Yeah, but you're in a hundred-year-old building. That probably makes it as hard or harder...
Absolutely, you're right.
Than going over to the sheriff's.
Absolutely. You're right again. I mean, I'm gonna quit talking. I'm gonna quit talking. You're on a roll, so I'll stop.
He's gonna buy you a present and give you some coffee.
If we don't have to get a generator to back those cooties up, we can save money.
The sheriff's office, you got it.
So, 'cause that's, that's one of the things that you already got backup over there for power, so.
Do you want to do something with some sort of temporary hookup?
Well, I think there's just so many different things going on over there. I mean, I would say, yeah, but we need to know what that is, and we need to know how we're gonna hook that up.
I think that's another question you ask.
The engineer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, how do we get temporary power for these things that are essential? 'Cause we, we have generators available. We can, or we can rent one for a while, or whatever it would need be. Go get the one from the old health department.
Isn't there a generator already with a, that is down in the basement, but we can't use or something like that? So, wouldn't it already be wired for something like that?
Did your generator ever wire that?
Well, no. He's talking about the generator in the, in the, in the...
Old jail.
In the old jail.
Right.
That generator is set up for that, but you would still have to bring that, I mean, it still has to be rewired where that pigtail comes out outside, so that when we call Bill at two in the morning, he can come out and just plug him in and crank it up and it pays off.
Right.
Does that one even work?
Transfer switch, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I mean, that one, well, I guess the red generator, the red genie would probably run, run it the same as that.
Sure, yeah, run our whole building. Our entire building. Planting power.
So, but you'd have to pay, I mean, you'd have to get a, I don't know, what power companies have around here that would have to come and rewire that. The good thing is, since there's already a generator there, you don't have to worry about running all the power and bringing it into a pigtail. It's already there, not like it was at...
You have to have a power box, right?
Yeah. So, we shouldn't be that difficult.
We'll get somebody here to look at it.
While you're here, Brian, last week, we were talking about the, the doors and stuff like that. How, what, how do you have it rigged right now?
As far as...
I don't think he knows about the doors and the locks and mag, magnetic, electronic magnets.
Okay.
We had door locks put back on the doors in case the electricity went out, where they can be logged with a key.
So, that's a different discussion, right?
Yeah, it's different.
Different discussion, but it ties in, this, all this ties in together.
Then how, how are we going to, are we going to be paying the law enforcement fund rent then for the IT being over there, or how we, how we doing that?
The sheriff's gonna pay us rent.
I was sitting there to vote those questions.
So, we're gonna have...
Sheriff's getting the benefits, so he's gonna pay us for it.
MOU from the sheriff saying that.
It's our building.
It's your building.
Yep.
With law enforcement funds.
Yeah, but you're using, it, it's being used for law enforcement purposes, the phones, the servers, that's all law enforcement purposes.
A portion of them.
Right. I, I still think, I think we're golden there. I don't think there's an issue. You wanna do...
We could put the collector over there, 'cause he collects money for the sheriff's office.
That's somebody cool.
I love catching him up in the air like that.
You just got finance charges on your tax bill.
Well, I'm just saying that right now, right now, the current sheriff sitting in there is fine with it being in there. When you retire, or whatever, somebody comes in and says, hey, there's nothing saying that IT can be over here. Get the hell out of my building.
Actually, there is, 'cause you guys own the building. So, yeah, I can't throw you...
We do, but it's gotta be for law enforcement.
So, can we move Jeff's office over there, John?
I don't think so. What's that, sir?
Can we move Jeff's office over? He said you want somebody cool.
Wow, Larry, how's that feel?
We have a, we have a spot down there. It's called Holden Cell.
I see what you're saying, but I think it, I mean, I think it's the ideal spot for it. I mean, if it's used for law enforcement purposes, I mean, and that's an essential function of law enforcement, that all that stuff operates, so, I mean, obviously, other buildings are using the servers too, but we would pay for any servers, but not the space.
But you could argue the other way, that it is serving other county functions, probably seventy-five percent.
We can, we can work it out in the admin fee, so, if you want, wanted to go there.
Well, I'm not saying I wanna free up more money for it, John. I'm just saying this could cause a problem down the road.
No, I agree. Hundred thousand a year would be good.
He's already given Brian shirts and all kinds of other stuff, buttering him up.
Nice coat, really nice coat.
So...
Car.
Yeah, Brian, what percentage of your time are you spending in the sheriff's office?
Oh, well, yeah, if we go there, then never mind. My argument is moot.
He's been spending a lot of time over at the health department, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Well, let me put it this way. I was late to this meeting, because I was at the sheriff's department.
Yeah, so his admin fee's gonna go up.
You were bringing food over there. That doesn't count.
It's law enforcement related.
Killing two birds with one stone. That was my little thing I asked him to do.
We're hiring, we may hire another person to help with the sheriff, so his admin fee might have to go up.
Why, they had to quit.
Well, then we can look at your space, you're, you're leaving, and maybe public defenders can do some of that, so.
Well, that's, yeah, that's one thing. That's all there is.
I was looking for a new office. Just teasing.
Okay. So, we're good?
I'll get ahold of Kerry and we'll start the process.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm already missing you, Brian.
Oh, you probably won't miss me.
Nah. Okay.
Let me get Larry out of here.
Yep, Kerry leave recommendation.
No, did you skip over the bonds?
We did, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna do. We'll get Larry. Larry's an important person, and then we'll go back.
I told you where you stand.
Okay, you're on the bond, so.
Larry up in front of you.
Okay, well, do you wanna do the bonds first, so that...
No, go ahead. Larry's pretty important.
He's standing for the bond, so he said it doesn't matter.
So, I'm the one that put the bonds on, on the agenda.
Right, okay.
So, it came up, I know that there's multiple elected officials that have bonds that are renewing at the end of the year. And there's some discrepancy as far as, you know, the statutes require a five or a ten thousand dollar bond. We have some elected officials that we've pushed up to a fifty thousand dollar bond. We'd like to be a little more consistent. I know that Larry's is way more. I know that the treasurer's is expected to be way more, so they're kind of the exception. There's need to be, just because of the amount of money that they deal with. But if we could be a little more consistent among the other elected officials, and it's more of a protection for the county than it is for the elected official themselves, because the bond is to protect you if the elected official does something that's an intentional criminal act as their duty as that elected official. This is kind of the county's recourse. If MOPRM does not cover that, that they can call that elected official's bond. So, it's more of a protection for the county than it is anything else. So, we would like to see those be closer to the fifty thousand across the board. We wanna make sure it's consistent, that we're protected if anything like that would happen. And we also kind of wanted to talk about the idea of possibly, it would be cheaper for the county if we grouped those together and went out to bid for the bonds as a group instead of individually, 'cause right now, each elected official is going out individually and getting that bond for their office, that possibly, we could see some savings if we went out as a group, listed all the elected officials at that price to see if we could get a better deal.
So, how would that work with the certain elected officials taking office at different times?
So, I don't know if you would list, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know if you can list the individual office holders and it not be tied to a particular person. So, like, if we could list recorder of deeds, county clerk, county auditor, or if you have to individually list them. If that's the case, we may have to have two separate steps, so one that does every two years. So, you'd have one group on one set of bonds and one group on the other. Like I said, there are exceptions, so Larry's has to be higher, the treasurer's has to be higher, Joe Koonstein's has to be higher. So, those are the exceptions to the rule. Theirs have to be higher by statute, just because of the amount of money that flows through their office.
Circuit clerk, she have to have one, or is that state, or...
I think hers is state. I know that we are not currently paying for her bond.
Well, now, Callaway County got reimbursed.
We can't get a scheduled position bond?
Yeah.
The clerk in, at Callaway County, what was it, two hundred and some thousand dollars that, and I, I think they're getting reimbursed for that.
So, I mean...
So, can we list it? So, I assume Larry's has to be a certain amount, and the treasurer's has to be a certain amount. You said Joe's has to be a certain amount.
Yes.
So, can you put them all together?
And is yours based on total collections, or is it based on a certain dollar?
Statute is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, could we tie his in with the others?
I don't know. I mean, I think it's something, yeah, I don't think you could on there. So, I, I mean, I think it's something we need to either, I know that we have some through Central Bank, we have some through, not, not at the moment, we have a few that are through Tbil Insurance. I think it's something we need to kind of reach out and see what our options are, and see if we can group those together.
Mine says I have to have five thousand to the state, so is that you're gonna get two for me then? You're gonna get one for the county and that for the state?
So, yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
I put it out on L E D's website, and it said, most of them do get a five thousand bond, and they send it to the state. 'Cause the bond, it says my bond has to be set to Secretary of State. Payable to the state for five thousand. I could have two, I can.
'Cause right now, you do not, correct?
No, I just have the fifty thousand. I guess it's payable to the county. That's the only one I have. I've never sent one to the Secretary. I don't know if anybody ever has.
Okay.
With that email you sent for what county was that they had to blanket, one, you're talking about doing that for the other ones that aren't specified, that have to be Larry's?
Right, so you would take the ones that have a specified amount and do them by themselves, but then take, like, you three, me, you could do one on the clerk for the fifty thousand, the recorder, lump up all...
Who takes care of them right now? Does Larry call around and gets, has to take care of his, and Steve does?
Each individual office holder.
Maybe it makes sense just to do it all together.
And I think that you could possibly see some savings if you, if you grouped them together on one policy.
So, obviously, you could have multiple ones payable to the state, but try to bid with one company for all the bonds.
Right. And then, would it be a better deal to have them all on one, one bond? So, like, do a blanket bond? Would the cost be less if we...
I would think it would be.
I would think that it'd just be a RFP that you would wanna bid bonding for various offices, and we'd like to use one company to, to do all of it, whether it's individuals, or a blanket, or a group, or, or an individual in Larry's case, but all of them would be with one company, so, is that kinda what you're thinking?
Yeah.
If you did that, could you stipulate that there would be five thousand for the state for the fire here also?
Yeah. Any bond can be payable to whoever, really.
For that, yeah, that's what you would have to down, like, for fifty thousand.
I just know we need to get on this, because we have multiple elected officials, Sam included, that renew at the end of the year, so our bonds have to be in place as of January the first.
So, how long's it gonna take to issue an RFP?
Well, so, I'm not sure, in this circumstance, Joe, wouldn't this be considered a professional? I mean, could you, is your insurance company necessarily a product? I mean...
No, it's like banking. We bid that out.
Okay. 'Cause individually, right now, they are not over the bid limit, so we're not going out to bid on them, because each individual's going to their own person and...
Right.
I think it makes more sense.
I don't think the bonds are payable to, to the state or the county specifically.
Gary, the chairman from Callaway County, said that their reimbursement's actually being paid back to the state. So, they're having to try to figure out how to get...
In Callaway County, it's being paid to the state?
Yeah, where the clerk had, had embezzled, that the insurance company wants to pay it to the state, and he said, no, it needs to come back to Callaway County, so they're...
So, was that the clerk that it does, or was it the collector? I think it was a collector.
I, I was thinking it was, I was thinking it was a clerk.
I'm very sure it was a collector.
I think you're right, Steve.
Yeah, I believe it was a collector.
Just remember who...
They both start with C, so, I mean, you know, and they're both...
They don't have any funds.
But, that's something.
If they pay the state, then the state's just gotta turn around and pay the county, because the state actually is out very little in the three percent they get for the blind pension fund, is all the state gets out of property tax collections.
Statutes are dissolved. I think they need to be updated. We all have different requirements and requirements.
Well, and I think that, that's kind of what brought it up as well, is that if someone was doing something illegal, five thousand dollars is not sufficient in these times. They have not updated that amount in many years, so it needs to be more like a fifty thousand dollar bond, not a five.
We have two hundred thousand dollars of the license plate, so, maybe change that for that, something like that.
I think this is more if you do something illegal, so, right, yes.
Close the office when you should.
Yes, yes. So, if you're doing something that MOPRM would not cover, or our, like, if your machines would be covered under liability insurance and things like that.
China is a special salad keeps for us.
Now, I also have a separate bond for the employees in my office that, that I pay for out of my tax... Now, I also have a separate bond for the employees in my office, that, that I pay for out of my tax maintenance funds.
And the county does as well, for individuals that deal with money, we list out who some of those employees are.
So could we do all this together, I mean, and obviously Larry would reimburse his, I mean, it just seems to me like it'd be simple just to bid it all once.
I'm surprised your employees aren't on the ones that the county does.
They are, but I felt safer getting a separate one.
So his employees are included in that one, but he has an additional one. And I think that the prosecutor may as well, I'm not sure.
And I think the one I got is for, it's like for half of what mine is, so it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand. I don't think the county's is, is that much, so.
You know, MOPRM did cover it when, what's her name stole from the jail?
Collector.
No, she was the jail.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Was it, but I think that was our, under our dishonesty bond, I think that we have one on the employees, yes, I think we have one on the employees through.
MOPRM?
Yes, well, through Not Not, I'm not sure if it's actually MOPRM.
I don't remember, Debbie, Debbie didn't, I just remember, we, we did get paid back, and had to fill out a thing about it being charged and all those stuff.
So do we renew these every year? So at the end of this year, it's gonna be pushing it to try to do it this year?
Well.
Well, collectors' bonds are four years.
Right, and most, like mine was a four-year bond, I know Steve's was, I'm pretty sure Sam's.
And ours are four years too.
Yes, so we, it's usually a little bit cheaper if you do the four-year as a bulk instead of paying it annually. I do know that Joe pays his annually, cause his is more expensive, so he does an annual one.
Okay.
You know, when I first became collector, I was doing annually, and it was over four years, like eight thousand dollars, and when I went with Kenny Tople, it, it was three thousand for the four years.
Yeah, so it's a significant savings usually to do it.
He writes eighty-three of the collectors, out of a hundred and fourteen, so I would hope that there would be some, you know, that as a collector, I could have some say in who's gonna write the bond. I, I have a lot of confidence in him, cause he, he, like I said, writes eighty-three of the hundred and fourteen collectors in the state, so.
I would maybe look at whatever we can combine.
Yeah.
We can still keep it under the amount, it can't be that much for who all got elected, I mean, you got Steve, Sam's, everybody else's yours. See if we can group them, but I think Larry's got a good point with his, he's already got one that's probably gonna be as cheap as they're gonna get it.
And I think his should probably be separate anyway, so I think Ralph's is the other one we need to, so Judy's coming in.
What do you think that, can you do a blanket one? Or does it have to be a certain amount plus?
I think you can list the individual office holder, not their names, but their offices, so you would list presiding commissioner, auditor, county clerk, recorder. I don't think you have to specify the name of the office holder, I think you, that's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but.
There's two kinds, one is a named, where you name the individual, and the other's a scheduled position, where you name the, the job that they have, so.
Do we have to bid that out, or can we just get a price for the temp?
Plus, my bond is, comes due at a different time than everybody else's, cause I don't go into office till March first, everybody else goes in.